Hearing is an application from Justin Schwartz and Judith Ina Keller, 19 Asylum Street, Mendon. Requesting a variance from Article 2, Section 2.01 of the bylaws, which requires 50 feet of front setback. The applicant seeks relief from 50 feet of down to 22 feet. Property is located at 19 Asylum Street, assesses map 20119, which can be viewed online.
Good evening. My name is Byron Andrews. I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Schwartz.
So would you repeat that, please?
Byron Andrews is on the phone, TB.
So Mr. and Mrs. Schwartz are requesting a variance to build a garage. Let me know if you have trouble hearing me. I'm getting a little feedback, but hopefully you can hear me okay.
I can hear you.
Okay. So they need to put their garage in that location because of a couple of restrictions that they have. To the left of their house is where the septic system is, which kind of restricts them from putting the garage there. To the right of the house, they only have about a little over 20 feet to the property line. So there's not enough room between the property line and the house to fit the garage. So we would be fitting it on the right-hand side, adjacent to the existing driveway. But that would be within the front setback. The proposed garage would have 29.9 feet of setback from the road. The requirement is a 50-foot setback, so they would require 30-point, I'm sorry, 20.1 foot variance.
Is this garage going to be attached to the house?
No, it is not.
Why is it not attached to the house? I can see, I can see the glowing over here.
I can see the house.
Yeah.
They can't attach it to the house because, they couldn't put it on the left of the house and attach it because of the septic system. And they couldn't put it on the right because they don't have enough area between them and the side, and the sideline of their property.
The septic system is immediately adjacent to side of the house? Or is it to the side and forward of the house?
It's to the side and forward. If you look on the plan, it's not as dark as some of the other objects on the plan, but you can see where the septic tank covers are. And they're about 12 or 15 feet in front of the left corner of the house.
It's not very clear on this plan here at all. You're right near the walkway, right?
Yeah.
Where it said "walk," the word "walk."
Yes, they're near the word "walk."
Is there somebody here who can really show us exactly where the septic system is? Pardon? Okay, right here. Would you?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I apologize. So, septic system. Here's the tank here, the leach field.
I see.
And the garage, the proposed garage doesn't physically fit within the property lines to the right of the house.
Yeah, I can see that. And where is your
You're very welcome, sir.
Where is your existing driveway?
Existing driveway. And we'll draw that as well, sorry.
Please. And how much space is between the tank and the side of the house?
It's 15 feet maybe.
15 feet?
Maybe. Yeah. It's less than 15 feet from the tank to the house.
One of the chairs is home.
Why don't you state that again? It's approximately 15 feet, a little bit less?
It's less than 15 feet.
From the
From the corner of the house to the, I'd say, center line of the septic tanks where the covers are. And the topography of the house in that area is a, it's a steep drop-off to a walkout basement on the side of the house.
I see. So would you say there's enough room? 10 feet between the corner of the house and the tank to run a driveway?
No, sir. Not, not the way that the topography is laid out and the way that the house is. There is an overhang from the second floor in front of the house in that area. And there's also, as I said, the ground is, is inclined in such a way that it is not feasible.
It runs downhill.
Very steeply. It's a, it's a full, full level difference from the front to the side.
And your neighbors' villas, do they have anything to say about this?
I'm not in the business of speaking for other people, so, no?
Okay. Slot 17, Apostle 17 beside you, that's all.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This driveway runs uphill pretty steep too, right?
Yes, it does.
It's gonna be a two-story garage or just a
No, sir. Just one-story, shallow pitch roof.
There'll be no cellar in the garage?
No cellar, sir.
And so the side setback is still compliant, right?
Yes, sir.
I've got no other questions. Ted, any questions? All right, anybody in the audience?
Anyone online?
Are online? Have any questions?
I don't see any hands raised.
Did I say a hand over here? No?
Nope.
Motion?
This is not gonna be a steel building, right? It's gonna be a wood frame.
Final siding to match the house, yes.
Match the house.
Architectural shingles, yes.
I'm making motion to approve the garage for 19 Asylum Street with 29-foot setback from asylum street.
All in favor? Aye. Done.
I'd like to thank the board, everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you all set with that?
We are all set. We can go on to the next one.
John, I think I'm missing
Hearing notice?
Yeah, yeah, notice again. Next hearing. Application of David and Kate Cushing, 32 Vincent Road, Mendon. Requested variance from Article 2, Section 201A of the zoning bylaws, which requires 50 feet of front setback. The applicant seeks relief from 50 feet down to 34, down to 37.4 feet. Property at 32 Vincent Road. Assesses map 1723932, which can be viewed online. The Yeah, that was in the folder.
Yeah, I gave you two separate folders.
Under there, the evidence to support a grant of variance, which asks you to describe or demonstrate the unique, peculiar soil conditions, shape, or topography, topographic of the subject property. Describe how these conditions especially affect only the land or structures in question. How they are unique to the subject property, and do not affect generally the zoning district which it is located. Their application says NA, which I guess means not applicable. E, describe how you believe a hardship is caused by the unique, peculiar attributes of the soil conditions, shape, topography of the subject property under a literal enforcement of the zoning bylaws. The hardship you described must be related to the unique or peculiar attributes you've described above. And against, the response is NA, which I assume means not applicable. John? Do you have anything to say about this?
Application.
Right now, let him present.
Thank you. Good evening. Hello, my name is David Cushing. I'd like to extend my sincere thanks for the opportunity to be heard before the board and for your time and consideration, particularly given our current circumstances. My wife and I would like to build a living space on the front of our home. Our main objective is to be able to watch our children play safely in our front and side yards and have a more substantial family room. Currently, our living space is in the southeast corner in the rear of the house, furthest away from their players. We seek a dimensional variance of relief from the 50-foot setback by 12.6 feet in order to build a space appropriate for the home. We don't believe this addition would negatively impact our neighborhood nor any property owner. Living on a straight stretch of road, it certainly would not affect visibility of the surroundings nor impair anyone from seeing around corners or coming and going from another property. We ask with great earnest and appreciate your time and consideration. I'm happy to discuss the oversight of the NA. In terms of the proposition of, for variance, that's for those reasons specifically why we chose that space, not only because that's where the kids play in that area, but particularly in the front of the home. You see, here's the D-box into the, into the leach field area. This is a very steep hill going to the backyard. This is all pretty much wetlands, even though it's not considered, considered preservation area or whatnot. And on this side of the home, we have propane tanks, chimney, standby generator, and the AC compressors over here. So that's why we figured this was the ultimate spot for the space here, which is already delineated by an existing retaining wall, walkway, and shrubbery in this area inside which the proposed addition would actually lie, the dark shaded gray area. The rear of the home also, you see the deck, there's a patio beneath that. Our wellhead is just beyond there, so it's
It's between the house and that shed.
This here, well, this is, this is the master bedroom and double garage here. So a living space over here is not an impossibility, but hardly the ideal, you know. I don't know, I would probably opt for an additional two-car garage and finish the existing two-car garage well before that.
You could put the addition to the right side of that house.
Like I said, not ideal. Not ideal. What we're looking for here is a single-story space. This is already two stories and nearly three stories in the back with the, with the topography going from grade here to grade in the rear. So I mean, I Double or triple the cost, perhaps. And in speaking with the architect, the, the front, it would not be poured foundation, it wouldn't be poured footings, but opting for helical piers, so.
So I'm just, I'm not clear on what the hardship was. You said you're going to speak to that and I just
Yes, I'm sorry. Just in terms of what was outlined in the variance, it seems that this is the only viable spot in which we could have some type of Sure, if you want to repeat first.
Yeah, I just asked what the actual hardship was.
Yeah, so in terms of proving a hardship, I mean, it, it's not like I shoveled a giant pile of stone and said, now there's this big pile of stone in my way. That was where I opted, excuse me. I didn't, I didn't mean to here. This is the side of the shed and the deck here. This is the kids' main play area, this side of the house, and of course, in the driveway. So upon building it here, this is when I came, I came before the conservation committee because everywhere else I propose to build something for the kids in their storage shed and whatnot, it's soaking wet. And I mean, there's a river that runs up to the house over here. So this is the spot where I chose to build a shed in the play area. And so by doing so, this is the only real viable place to be able to see outside and see the kids because right now, this is the living space back here. Like I said, this is just wet and woodlands and a giant hill back here. So as far as topographically, but also, you know, that's where, that's where the, the D-box and the leach field exists. There are several impediments in every direction of the house with the exception of directly off the front.
So the setback is gonna be how fast from the road?
The setback would be 37.4. We're seeking 12.6 more feet.
Are there any order or conditions still attached to that subdivision or are they gone by?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Covenant.
Excuse me.
Covenant, yeah, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. The way the board is, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the way that we set this up is the board asks all the questions in, at first, and then when we're done
Oh, okay.
Then we open it up to the general public, but you were helpful with his question.
I used the wrong terminology, covenants. I couldn't think of it right off the top of my head. I was just wondering if there's anything still attached or not. Not that I'm aware of. That's something I imagine I would have passed by from the previous owner at the purchase and sale.
Usually recorded, that's all.
Yeah, usually in the deeds for the whole subdivision. From what I understand, that the covenants are in place and that there are restrictions on, on what you can or cannot do with your properties, anybody's properties. And the reality of it is that you needed to describe some sort of a hardship in your application. The add add to all this, there are at least several letters of, or emails of opposition to your project. I'm not gonna go into and read, read all of them because some of them are very lengthy. But it's unusual that an applicant would get so many, so much opposition.
Agreed. I, I mean, not, not to, not to mean to say agree.
You know, I, I personally would suggest that you reconsider the location to the side of the house. And that's just my opinion. They don't think we've granted any variances in that whole subdivision for setback variances. I don't think we've ever done one.
So now, if you were, you were described earlier, you had some apprehension putting it to the right of the house. Now, what was, because spatially with the dimensions of the add-on, that would still be compliant with all setbacks, front and side, right?
Yes.
As far as a structure, yes, but as far as being connected to the house and living space, there's, it's an existing two-car garage. So I mean, that, that's I mean, who wouldn't like to have a four-car garage, but
So you would think about what, refinishing the two-car garage and then putting the addition, another garage on the house? So you'd be deleting a garage and building a garage? So that's, okay, I understand your
Yeah, that's the apprehension there because the, the master bedroom is over the two-car garage.
Yeah.
So to put the living space directly beneath that, you know, at negative grade into the garage, you know.
I think you could put, if you wanted to, you could put an addition on the end of the house, between the shed, house and the sheds.
That's what I'm
That's what we're discussing.
Yes, I know it.
But that's, that's, there's an existing two-car garage there.
Yeah.
Probably check into the covenant and see if it's binding still.
Because I think there is a covenant on that whole subdivision.
Because that, that takes jurisdiction over what you can and cannot do.
Sorry, it's news to me.
I don't know where you'd find that covenant. How'd you think of being the deed? It's them.
I have a copy of the original
Say your name.
Oh, thank you. I'm strapping a button across the street. I do have a copy of the original covenant. I don't know, they were to run for 20 years. And then they would have to be renewed. I don't know what that process would be. You'd have to go to the a copy, would you like them? Of the covenant?
That'd be great, yeah.
Has it been over 20 years? I forget how old that project
Yeah, starting in 1996, and it ran for 20 years, so that would have been 2016.
We bought in 2017.
So, so it's expired then?
Not necessarily, because it can be renewed for an extra, an extra 10 years can be added on to the original covenant.
Was that done?
It's in the covenant and I don't know what was done on, because I'm not sure who in town does that.
So it may be expired? You say your name?
Debbie Carroll. I'm at 35 Vincent Road.
Okay. We just got to record all of them. We just got to record all who ever spoke. That probably have to renew the registered deeds, I would think.
That's my understanding. And this just came up last week, so
Yeah, I
Nobody had a chance to research that. All covenants shall run with the land and shall be bonding on all parties and persons claiming under them for a period of 20 years from the date of the recording of this instrument. After which, these covenants may be extended or amended for successive periods of 10 years by an instrument signed by a majority of the then-owners and recorded in the registry of deeds.
Doesn't give a time period for that, when, you know, if it expires, it doesn't give a time period for when you can do it?
I think when this was originally done, it originally intended to cover the developers, such that
That's, that's, yes.
They had certain
And then it goes away usually.
Yes.
See that, Eric? Can I see that copy of the covenant?
Oh, copy of the covenant?
There's only one.
There's only one?
Yeah. I've got another one here, just don't ask me any questions.
I'll guess that's
I can leave this one when we're done. Can I speak to what my
Yes, ma'am.
My concern was that in the spirit of the covenant, well, the houses in Vincent Road and Blueberry Drive are not cookie cutter. They, they're unique, a lot of them. Some are very similar, some not. But But they all come within the spirit of the covenant. And even though it doesn't mention setback, they're all, from what I can guess, with one possible exception, 50 feet back, they all have two-car garages. Any additions put on, and I can think of one offhand, were added to the house such that they didn't look like something that was out of place. And my concern was this looked out of place. When I first pulled that diagram, I think it's probably the same one that... Oh, no, it's a little different. There was a nice picture.
Is there an artist rendering somewhere that we can't see?
Yes.
Just to the immediate butters, I handed out a second revision from my architect that shows nothing but a picture. Happy to show you. This is nothing like what...
I had not seen the letter from the zoning board when I pulled this out of my mailbox, and I pulled it out picture-side up, so I had no clue what it was. But looking at it, and this is my other, one of my other concerns, is it almost looked like an attachment of an office of some kind, like, I don't know, or could be used as a daycare center or something. And I didn't even realize it was for what it was about until I turned over the back and read David's write-up about what they, what they were looking to do. I did not even realize when I first looked at that, that that was the Cushing's home.
Can I have a retort? In fairness, this is kind of a low-resolution revision to not-yet finalized plans. That was to give an idea to the immediate butters as to what we intended, along with, you know, explanation on the back. In terms of this covenant, we bought in 2017. If something was enacted in the late 90s that perhaps expired the year prior to us moving in, I mean, it's beyond me.
Yeah, we don't know either.
And I wouldn't have signed anything, quite frankly. I'm all for being the perfect neighbor and being neighborly to everybody around me. Anybody needs a hand. But this covenant thing, it's not a historic district, it's not an HOA. If everybody get together and said, "Hey, for whatever purpose, let's, let's all get together if somebody wants to change the color of their door," fine. If I was in on that discussion back when it initiated, I would be okay with that.
Irregardless of the covenants, this board is, doesn't have to make a decision based on whether they're...
Understood.
Whether they are, exist, or do not exist.
Apologies, I've been blindsided the past 30 hours, that's all, I'm sorry.
They may not even be existence now.
Understood, understood.
But I did take the opportunity this afternoon to drive down there.
You're the Chevy Tahoe, or Suburban, yeah?
Yes.
Select Suburban, gotcha.
And I parked down the street a little bit and to get a handle on...
Sure.
What was really going on down there. And, which is why, strongly suggesting that you reconsider and find a way to put it between the end of the house and the shed.
Yeah.
The, I don't personally think that the protrusion, you're considering going in the front of the house adds anything to the neighborhood. And my...
It certainly would change it from a center entrance colonial.
My opinion.
Yeah.
And... I agree. I don't like adding onto the front of the house in a subdivision like that anyways. If you're off in the woods somewhere, you've got 40 acres.
You thought the left side was not good for you either, right?
Topography?
Well, yeah, I mean, which side are we talking about? Because this is facing, the south is up. So yes, to that side, that's, that's all the guts on that side of the house, yeah. Right side, there's the two-drive into the two-car garage with a little bit of a turnoff there, and then again, steeply towards the back of the house. In terms of, I think there would have to be quite a bit of improvement in the lands and whatnot to form something.
You know, you might, you might contact a architect as opposed to a civil engineer. The civil engineer did this.
He did the plot plan. I've been working with an architect for the, for the addition plans, yeah.
Yeah. So at any rate...
I did a quick search on mass land records of covenant, and it looks like there were some certificates filed in 2015 upon the, what would be the expiration of the covenant. They can't quite make out what they say, because it looks like half of the page was cut off on the, on the PDF, so they can't quite... It looks like there's something filed, but I couldn't tell what it was on the expiration.
Again, whether... We really don't care about that covenant. Is it in existence or not?
Right, no, absolutely.
Are there any other, any questions from any of the audience? Or anybody online?
I don't see any hands up.
I don't have any questions, but should I stand up and stick on?
Certainly. Your name?
Yeah, if you can come up to the...
Just approach a microphone somewhere.
Any microphone.
So, you may not know this, but Dave and I have the same builder and the exact same house, just reversed. And ours are the only two houses in our whole neighborhood.
No, you have a farmer's porch across the front.
We have the same builder and it's the same model home.
Okay.
Just in a reverse direction. So I understand the space. My house is exactly the same as his. 10 years ago, we added an addition, almost the exact same size as what he is looking to put in the front of his yard, 24 by 24. That's a very large room. I have one. Like I said, we put it towards the back. I understand the issue going on here. I clearly do. And I'm all for someone with kids trying to have extra space. The, you mentioned tonight, the, you know, needing the space just to have extra room in the house, but initially, it was to see the play yard, yards for the children, which are at the front of the house. And one is, you know, very close to the road. You may have seen this if you said you were in the neighborhood. That has been a topic of concern in the neighborhood regarding the traffic, and something so large as the play area, it's very large, that close to the road. So that has already been a concern. And it's, I don't want to use the word issue, but it's a safety concern. So, looking at the rendition of the drawing that we received, and I understand the 25 by 25 size, and I know you want to see the kids' area, to put that on literally at the front door of a very traditional neighborhood home in that particular neighborhood, just is extremely out of place with the conventional homes in that neighborhood. And a big concern, and I, you said you had emails today, of concern with a lot of neighbors, and many of them weren't even around to talk to, but they talked amongst themselves. It wasn't like I was talking to everybody, I was not. They were talking amongst themselves when this came up. It, we're concerned about the resale value of our own homes and what something so unconventional on the main street through Blueberry Estates would do to the property. It's not just us across the street or next door. It's really the whole street and maybe the whole Blueberry Drive itself, which is a horseshoe with some other...
I was more concerned, you should grant it, have everybody else coming forward. Well, you did that, so then every other house is going to have one. They're going to come up for other variances, for other additions.
Well...
And with the architectural...
You just don't know. I mean, I can tell you, the people living, the people that have been living there, you would never see something like this.
No, but I'm saying, it could, five years...
You could.
You'd never know.
We have many, many people moving out and many people moving in.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
Once you set a precedent.
Yeah, that's right. So I just...
I'm not saying tomorrow somebody's going home.
Right, exactly. And we have had a lot of people moving out and people moving in.
Everywhere.
So, you know, it's important to keep the sanctuary of a neighborhood. So I think some of the suggestions that you guys said tonight, it, maybe it just is, you know, a reevaluation. I don't know, but I will say, we feel very strongly as the residents up in that part of town that this is very unconventional and does not belong.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think everybody should go to add on the house or do whatever they want, but keep it conforming to the neighborhood, you know, the architectural nature of the neighborhood. And this isn't.
That's the figure we could do.
I don't see any hands up in, online.
Pardon?
See any hands up online.
Anybody else have any questions? Hear a motion? Well, I'd give him an opportunity to withdraw without prejudice in case he wants to file anything else later.
I'm not sure how that works.
If we would...
Logistically.
If we deny, then you got two years. You can't do anything for two years. If you withdraw, you can come back. I'm just giving you that option. Three months.
Right, thank you, thank you for the education. Yes, please.
It's your prerogative.
As much as my wife and I want to continue to build our forever home where we, I truthfully hope to die, not anytime soon, but I definitely don't want to move again, I thought there might be one dissenting neighbor, but it seems that there are several dissenting neighbors, not all the dissenting neighbors, and that's what I want to avoid at all costs. And that's why I've been getting blindsided like this. I would have loved to have had a conversation prior to this.
I think that if you put it on the side of the house or something, neighbors would be more accommodating or more with the typical neighborhood, the architecture of the neighborhood.
I don't disagree, but we're talking $5 to $10.
I understand, I'm not...
Yeah.
I think that was a very good move or suggestion for John to make, to give you the opportunity to rethink the whole thing.
Much appreciated.
And not have to wait two years.
Wonderful.
So, your choice.
By all means, please, full withdrawal.
So you're going to withdraw then? You're going to withdraw?
Yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to close that public hearing for, who is it? 32 Vincent Road. Notice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much. Sorry for wasting time.
So, did everybody get a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, I did.
I did also.
Any corrections?
No.
This is for two meetings, the 25th of March and April 1st.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 25th. Second, third. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I can't do the next one, I wasn't here.
That's right, you weren't here. Tom was here.
Yeah, oh, aye.
No, you need to make a motion first.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
From April 1st?
From April, yes. April 1st. April 1st.
Second, oh, I can't look.
Yes, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
No.
We have to pay fees.
I've got to discuss my variance fees.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
I'll put it in your packets.
Yeah, I got it here, I got it, I got it.
They need to be raised.
Yeah, Ellen...
They need to be raised.
Period. If you look at the numbers.
But I wasn't sure who does the raising. I didn't know if it was this board that did it, or if it, we suggest and it goes to the select board.
I think it does. I think, I was on a board last time we raised them. I think we just proposed it and then had it go to...
Yeah, I thought, doesn't the select board handle all...
All fees, but I think a recommendation from this board...
We had to make a recommendation and it had to go to them and the finance didn't. To them.
So, as you can see, these are just the hearings that I had anything to do with, and some of the hearing, just the newspaper ads cost more than what we're collecting for a hearing fee. So I think an adjustment is in order. I believe...
Plus, I think...
Millville does 350. Plus, it doesn't cover my admin or supplies or postage, you know, it's not covering.
It should be one set fee that covers everything.
Yeah, and plus, it seems like we've had a little uptick...
Yes.
In hearings as well, so, I mean, if that continues somewhere...
Do you have an estimate in mind that covers all the things that can come up during a submission?
Well, I think probably, I have Hartford Ave West might be a typical one. Although the amount of the butters, it depends on the property.
It is such a, it's like a wild card.
Like the most of butters you could have would be 10, or...
I mean, we got 45 on one of these.
Yeah.
Really?
Because it was two properties, so the butters were both properties.
I mean, I would say, I would say, looking, giving a quick look at this, it seems like the average is about 20.
Of butters.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan?
Can I offer a suggestion?
Yeah.
And I don't know if this could be covered on by law changes, but I know like the historic in the demo delay just specifically says the applicant pays the cost of the mail, period, whatever it is.
Like the planning board does, right?
That's what we do.
And it's the newspaper at the time. The fees plus a markup or not.
So you'd just be basically billing when you know what the total is.
Right. Do we run risk? Does anybody reneg on that?
I haven't heard of any.
Yeah.
You've got to do it in a way where you're not losing.
That's right.
Oh, right.
I think we should...
Right?
I don't know if we could do the, keep a fee, say we keep the 250, and the, on top of 250, they've got to pay the mailings or whatever.
Pay for the mailings, yeah. Well, they already pay for, well, they pay for the butters list, but they don't pay for the postage.
That's right.
So, yeah. We could, we, what the planning board does is, I think, they are responsible for the mailings.
We are.
Yeah, but then you have to have faith that they're going to mail it to everybody.
And we also want to try and find a way to cover your costs.
Right.
So, any ideas on how we can...
So, am I, am I correct in understanding that the only variable is the amount of mailings?
Well, it looks, there's a pretty...
The newspaper ad is a variable.
Why, why is there such a variable on the newspaper ad?
It goes by the letter. So, a longer hearing notice.
So there's two variables. The mailings and the, so separate those out, come up with a set fee, 350, whatever, right? Just for the submittal. And then they owe you for whatever those other two end up costing, you know? And they have to pay you before the hearing.
Before they get their decision or their certificate of no appeal.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, how we govern our costs?
It should be covered in the three...
Well, right now, my costs are in the budget.
Yeah.
And the, I'm not in charge of the budget, though, the town administrator is. So she put a number in. I think my costs are covered, but even when you subtract, but after you subtract the other stuff, the whole budget's not covered. So even though she puts in for a certain amount for my hours, really, it's the fee, the hearing fees that are not covering what they need to cover. So, I mean, we need, we do need to up it.
Based on these numbers, though, 350, have you covered for all cases, right?
I think 350...
That would be less complicated.
And we could revisit it if it's not hitting.
Try it out and see, 350, and then bill for the other two and see if it covers it. And if it doesn't, you can go to 375 or 400.
Yeah. Yeah. I think 350 will probably cover it, but I don't know that. I mean, as these things...
I would say go with 350 and see, revisit and see where we're at in a few months.
Okay, I'm going to need a vote on that, and then one of us is going to have to go in front of the select board. Probably me.
You.
Because I think, I think lowering your level of complication, you know, would be a benefit as well.
Yeah, exactly.
So make a motion to approach the select one with raising the base fee to 350. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done.
Now you can make your motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.